Anonymous.
Anonymous?
I mean, it's long.
Oh.
Yeah, it's all about him. Probably all about it.
He goes in with brains, football. So, I lost him. Can't get my granddaughters here. Hi, Papa, we'd love you, can you come over? Wow, I'm really busy. Give me fifty bucks, you just come over. I got the money, I got the brains. It's always something.
It's had the wrong exhibit C on it. This has something, has nothing to do with... It's got nothing to do with... Exhibit A. Now, see, this was 2025-01, this is a resolution. Let me do one.
We talked about at the last parks meeting, touch some... She's come back, they consolidated the contracts and the information is actually in your packet if you turn in your council packet. Again, get started.
Well, so, what... Oh, shoot, I picked up the wrong one. God got it. Yeah, I picked up the wrong one.
Voice, please.
So, your packet, or you should have a list of all the cameras we're talking about. It's sixteen cameras that are called multisensor and then four cameras that are... Or six cameras that are what they call the pan tilt zoom, the PTZs. I'm learning these things. And then it also includes them, all the different support equipment, if you will, the networking and things like that. And that's what's on this sheet. That's that list of things that's on that sheet. And then the detailed information is in here, in your, in this other packet. We've already received the order of the equipment they ordered last year. That's, that's already in this packet. That's what the Park and the Little Turtle, or no, I'm sorry, the Riverside, those, those six cameras are part of that, are already part of that. So, anyway, in the Little Turtle one. And, and so what we... The total cost of that is for everything, including what was ordered last year, was a hundred and forty-nine thousand and ninety-five dollars and forty cents. And we already have a purchase from that, that last year's was twenty-four thousand, ninety-five and forty cents, okay? Just, that's where we're at. So, they did accept the proposal to just put it all together. And so now it's thirty, for an annual payment of thirty-five thousand, six ninety-six, sixty-six for five years. And that will, that will get us all, everything installed and delivered. And we have the software, we have everything we need to operate these cameras. And so that's what Resolution 2025-112 is all, is basically saying. Yes, on everything. Yep, everything, yep. Me too. Me too. So, anyway, so what we're able to do is put the twenty-four thousand that we encumbered from last year towards that thirty-five. And I only needed eleven thousand, six oh one, twenty-six from the, we're gonna, we asked you to transfer that from the Burkhardt Park Fund because the count, the Parks Board decided they didn't want to do anything with the Parks, with the Burkhardt Park because it is surplus. So, anyway, that's where that eleven thousand, six oh one is going to come from. We did put in a request for a transfer to do that.
Right, and that's...
I knew you were gonna ask me, no, I, I don't. I, Kevin might have that conversation, have had that conversation. But I know they're ready to go ahead and install ones we've ordered, ordered last year. They're ready to install those. So, I would say we can get started within the next, the next couple of weeks, I would think.
He needs a pole out there.
I'm sorry, what?
Kevin had mentioned that you gotta have a pole placed at Houston.
At Houston Park. He's gonna put one camera on the, on the mound that sits on the south end of the athletic field there at Houston Park. And he can, he can make that happen with his own, his own work. So, he's gonna... We don't need, if the utility will put the pole in, we can put the line, the electric line to it.
Can you fit that on the list of things we'd like for the utilities to do?
We're working on that list. You know, I need, yeah.
Go through Haley.
Right, right.
That's the way he wants to have that.
Is that...
Yeah. Well, I'll, we'll get that list from Haley. I was, the other thing I was thinking was that they need to set a budget of how much that's gonna cost them to do that so that you know how much we're spending, I guess.
Right.
And I, I said that to the superintendent and so we'll just hoping to hear back from him soon. Yeah.
All right. Questions on the cameras? Everybody okay with moving this forward as is, one big package and getting it all done?
It's good.
Yeah, but it's that fire chief position, the mechanic one, sorry. I thought it was something about the mechanic position. That's what I thought it was. I think it's because it's all in one, but not really sure, I guess.
See if it's... Do you have the right exhibit to the... You have an exhibit added to it where the... See, exhibit C needs to be on... Be it 2025-01, but he has the resolution. Oh, okay, mine's got it, here, here. Okay, he changed it, we're good. That's good. I also thought he did away with it. All the warrants for police and fire because it says in here that we're still giving them two hundred dollars each. But we didn't do that. We did, it's okay.
Twenty twenty-five-oh-five? Twenty-five-oh-five? Okay. Yeah, because it's the second reading, right?
Good evening, it is Monday, March third, 2025. I'm Mayor Chris Martin calling to order the regular session of the Logan's Board Common Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. B.J. Cox.
President.
Chris Howard.
President.
Cameron Austin.
President.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Present.
Scott Peedy.
Present.
Susie Wamsley.
Present.
Dave Morris. I'll start with the approval amendments for the February third, twenty twenty-five meeting. Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Dave Morris. Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Like to congratulate the Logan's Board Ironhorses on their first basketball victory on last night. Reports from committees, boards, and commissions.
Mr. Mayor, we had a planning and economic development committee meeting, February nineteenth. We discussed gifting of part of Heritage Park. Discussion of fountain there in the same spot. We also discussed a habitat for humanity. I was gonna get some type of legal description of when they were gonna start and be finished with their job on Nineteenth Street. And the alley vacation by Peak at Fourteenth and Fifteenth and Wright Streets, they were gonna get a legal description to kind of help in their identification of such. Thank you.
We had a meeting for the Parks Committee meeting on February nineteenth. We discussed the camera system, which moved on to finance, which moved on to finance. And, and we talked about the RFPs for the clubhouse simulators for the golf course to borrow money from a local financial institution. And that moved forward to tonight's meeting. And we also discussed establishing credit card charges to, um, credit card users at Dyckman Golf Course to help with the fees that the golf course has been paying. And that also moved on to tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Any further reports from committees, boards, and commissions? All right. Onto all business ordinance 2025-05, Councilman Morris.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Dave Morris. Ordinance 2025-05 passes on its second reading. Ordinance 2025-06, Councilwoman Zenzmaster.
Ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, amending ordinances 2018-33, ordinance 2024-27, Section Two, and ordinance 2024-28, Section Two, as they pertain to payment in lieu of taxes for pilot for Logan'sport utilities to the city of Logan'sport, Indiana. I would ask for a vote on ordinance 2025-06 on its second reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Dave Morris. Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-06 passes on its second reading. New business, Resolution 2025-108, Councilman Cox.
Resolution 2025-108, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, to approve and enter into a land acquisition agreement with Habitat Humanity of Katz County. Mr. Mayor asks for a vote on Resolution 2025-108.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Dave Morris. Resolution 2025-108 passes. Resolution 2025-109, Councilman Peedy.
Resolution 2025-109, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, to approve and enter into a land acquisition agreement with CCCF Holding LLC. Mr. Mayor asks for a vote on Resolution 2025-109, please.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to add, I spoke to Deanna Crispin about this today. She would like to...
For...
I had some Indianapolis meeting with Lily today.
On the farmers. Later today and tomorrow.
Question? Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Dave Morris. Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-109 passes. Ordinance 2025-07, Councilman Howard.
Ordinance 2025-07, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, amending ordinance 2008-37, local historic district, our local historic district boundary. This is the first reading on ordinance 2025-07. I ask for a vote, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Motion. Motion for that?
Dave, just motion for the suspension of rules.
Say it.
A second. Any further discussion? Call for question. Dave Morris. Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-07, has the rule suspended? Any further discussion? Call for question. Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Dave Morris. Ordinance 2025-07 passes on suspension of rules. Resolution 2025-110, Councilwoman Wamsley. Oh, that was the, yes, sorry, there we go. All right, now I need a motion and a second on ordinance 2025-07 vote.
Motion.
Second.
Call for question. Dave Morris. Cameron Austin. Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Now, ordinance 2025-07 passes on the suspension of rules. Resolution 2025-110, Councilwoman Wamsley.
Resolution 2025-110, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, transferring appropriations for the Parks Department. I move that we have a vote on Resolution 2025-110.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Dave Morris. Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-110 passes. Ordinance 2025-08, Councilman Austin.
Ordinance 2025-08, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, to establish a surcharge payment for the use of credit cards for the operational fees at Dyckman Park Municipal Golf Course. Mr. Mayor asks for a vote on ordinance 2025-08.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Call for question on suspension of rules. Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Dave Morris.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-08 has the rule suspended, a motion and a second to vote. Make a motion.
Second.
Call for question. Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Dave Morris.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-08 passes on suspension of rules. Resolution 2025-111, Councilman Morris.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Chris Howard.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Dave Morris. Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-111 passes. Resolution 2025-112, Councilwoman Zenzmaster.
Resolution 2025-112, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, authorizing the expenditure of funds for the purchase of Verkata security cameras and installed by Mission MSP throughout the Logan'sport Parks. And I would ask for a vote on Resolution 2025-112. Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
Dave Morris.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-112 passes. Ordinance 2025-09, Councilman Peedy.
Orderance 2025-09, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, amending ordinance 2024-09 pertaining to economic development efforts concerning the city of Logan'sport and the Katz County, and the Katz Logan'sport Economic Development Organization. This is the first reading. Mr. Mayor, I ask for a vote on ordinance 2025-09, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for question. Dave Morris. Susie Wamsley.
Yes.
Cameron Austin.
Yes.
Scott Peedy.
Yes.
Haley Zenzmaster.
Yes.
B.J. Cox.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-09 passes on its first reading. Ordinance 2025-10, Councilman Howard.
Ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Logan'sport, Indiana, vacating an alley for Peak Community Services located south of Wright Street between Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street. This will be the first reading. Mr. Mayor, I ask for a vote on ordinance 2025-10.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
On this particular one, this required a...
I was about to s... So, I would table it? Or do you want to just pause and do the public hearing? Six thirty is... Six thirty is when the public hearing was set. It's six fifteen.
Min your agenda, put it at the end of the agenda.
It is at the end.
At the end of it?
Yeah.
No.
Do you want to come up and kind of explain this?
Fifteen minutes?
Why am I always the one everybody picks to waste time? Okay, okay.
Alley itself where you could take a look at it and...
I know Chris is here too. So, basically, these are the properties that were purchased by Peak to do some duplexes. With the different development they want to do on the lot, they would need to vacate that alley. There's currently no really utilities in that area. And so they're looking to vacate it to provide the whole half block for their property so they can move forward with more construction, more construction. Because it is both their properties on both sides, that whole alley would be theirs to be able to construct over if vacated. So, I know that they've been working on it for a while. Unfortunately, it went to six thirty and so... Yeah, so they ha, currently have two that are facing right. And then they're looking to possibly add in the future some additional. But right now, I think the only utilities that are in that alley are the utilities for the homes that they're constructing. They previously went to Board of Works because they were doing a retaining wall to get approval to continue that retaining wall along Wright. to get approval to continue that retaining wall along Wright Street. But they want to vacate it for future possible development on that site. I know that their notice is to themselves, but I know it has to be a public hearing too, so.
Had it in the past.
Yeah. And really, the, I mean, if you look at the elevation in that area, there's no way you could do an alley. The only reason why you would keep that is for utilities to be there anyway. No, no. We had that in some other properties where the school, like Jefferson School, had the same where there's alleys that kind of run through it as well. But it's always been used as the whole lot as one. Yep, no problem. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, does anybody have any public comments they'd like to make? Now would be the time.
Time issues, sensitive issues. We have one, Kelly, a ordinance Sunday about the sale of the 230 KB line by the utility. What's the hearing for the 230 KB line?
April 10th.
April 10th? Okay. So we need to have two readings before April the 10th, I believe. Is that, is that the case on that, Kelly?
You can, but... Of course it's been the rules if you wanted to. To me, it's basically been done in your earlier stuff, but they wanted to have a confirming resolution or ordinance with the commission because they're, it's looking like they are not going to have to have a full-blown hearing because nobody's objecting. But they need the documentation to make it. And Greg has already testified in his prefiled testimony. And he'll be there if we need to. But this would just confirm from the council's standpoint what he's testified.
On Jonathan Young, who works... And the type of renovation. Report. Seventeen, so we want to get him under contract in order to keep our timeline for the Oak Court grant that we want to apply for in June. And we've been told by Tim Carr...
C.I.R.P.
Yeah. Regional grant, grant people. And he's the one helping coordinate all this with, with Malcolm. And... Which if we did it by next... So it, which... Actually, it would help towards the match and get, get the timeline, keep it in order. So just, so we will hopefully get those meetings. Jacob, check the...
Four.
So next Monday, March 10th at 5:30?
Utility and then what else?
Have the utility, then finance committee, and then have those two...
So it'd be utility, finance, and special counsel. Got it.
All right, appreciate it. 5:30, Dave? You have a comment?
This for public comments, just matter or just in general?
Any matter. Yep.
Well, good evening. How you guys doing? My name is Daniel Muir. I like the council of this city, Logan'sport, place my rights under consideration and any benefits that subscribe by law to be allocated to the same. Any allocation from benefits stemming from statute, codes, budgets, or laws are now payable to the city of Logan'sport. Any allocations from benefits stemming from statutes, codes, budgets, or laws are now payable to the city of Logan'sport. Thank you.
Would you like to explain that, sir?
Excuse me?
Would you like to explain that to us, please?
Um... I'm just setting forth some appropriations that I'm giving to the city, pretty much.
So much making a statement of that, what you just mentioned?
Excuse me?
You're making a statement defining those things that you just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Brian. I'm here as a representative of Ladiya Holbert of Dallas, Texas, located at 5900 Valcon's Drive in Austin, Texas, 78731. She gave me instructions to grant the city of Logan'sport and its mayor, Chris Martin, some $4,500,000 appropriated by law and transferable in excess to the same. Her offices will be filing with Dunn's and Bradstreet under Dunn's number 001-837-108. The county of Cast receiving an expenditure on the record of company number 35-6000131 for the benefit of the city, city's creditors and the city shall report the same. Thank you. Basically, this is expenditures of the city as it yields to the mayor and council's release of funds. The, what I just did explained? The, what I just explained previously?
Can you say the lady's name again?
Ladiya Holbert.
Can you spell it?
And then her last name is H-O-L-B-E-R-T. I think so, yes, sir. Can you send me the...
Kelly, can he send that to you or... So we know what...
If somebody's trying to give money to the city? And somebody's got money, they're wanting to donate?
As far as I know, I'm just the representative. That's all I can, I really...
They're the representative.
You know this person?
Yes.
And what was your name?
Brian Howde Show.
Brian what?
Howde Show.
Can you spell it?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you live in Logan'sport?
No, ma'am.
Where do you live?
In Tennessee.
You live in Tennessee?
Correct.
And this woman that you're speaking of, where does she live?
In Texas. I'm not fully aware of that. I don't know.
Spell your first name, B-R-I-A-N?
Why?
Why?
How did you get involved in this? Did she contact you?
Somewhat, yeah.
Are you an attorney that has legal representation of this lady?
No, sir.
What's, what's your...
Oh, yes, I do have power of attorney over this, what I just said, yes.
You have that document or...
I can get it.
Okay. Is she expecting something for this one?
I'm just the representative, I've just said it.
That's what I'm asking you. You're the representative.
I was just told to say that.
Get that through like the city's?
Apple.
Open email thing?
Yeah. We got it.
Never got it. Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We have a couple minutes, yeah.
I have a question, just a follow-up question about the time clocks. Are they all installed?
Yeah. No, we are waiting on the contractor to get back with us. That's doing the wiring for the fire departments in here. But we are able to log into all of them now. So once those three are installed, they'll be able to be used at that point.
Are they going to be?
They're supposed to, well, I don't know when the guy's going to get back with us. He was here about a week and a half ago and looked at all of it and was supposed to give me a quote.
Do you have to do install, like, lines or...
Yes, for the wiring.
Okay.
Okay, well, this, this is March 3rd. And this money was appropriated for this in 2024. And I just, you know, if I vote to have something done, I expect it to be done way sooner than this.
Right. No, we haven't paid anything. We're still waiting on them. Vote to get back with us.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, could you come back up here, please? Could you come back up to the microphone, please? For what you just read, those are statements of rights, is that what I'm gathering?
Excuse me?
What you read just a moment ago, was that a statement of rights?
No, just like I said, I have the, I have expenditures that I'm appropriating to the city.
You have, you want to build a city for your expenditures?
No, I have, I have appropriations that I'm giving to the city.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You have a corporation?
No, appropriations.
Appropriations?
I'm giving to the city.
You mean money?
Yes.
And you're going to give it to the city?
Correct.
What's the city need to do to accommodate that?
Excuse me?
Why?
What's your reasoning for giving money to the city? Do you expect something from the city for that donation?
It's just me working with the city.
Okay. Okay. Where would he need to...
Well, who are you working with?
Excuse me?
Who are you working with?
On behalf of myself and my brother.
Okay. But I mean, are you working with someone with the city to make this happen or you're, you just want to do this?
Just what I want to do.
Okay. And you want to, you want to give money to the city of Logan'sport? And what would you like for us to do with it?
Whatever the city needs fit. I have a couple of things that in mind that, you know, through conversation.
Okay, so are you going to make an appointment with someone to talk to the city representatives, like the mayor or the deputy mayor?
I can't.
Okay.
They come to the Board of Works meeting on Wednesday afternoon at 3 o'clock. It'll probably be a good time to, so we could thrash this out a little bit.
You said Wednesday afternoon at 3?
At 3.
Back there in these chambers.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Now, it is 6:32 PM. We will open up for the public hearing on the alley vacation. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment?
I'm Chris Neighbors, Chief Executive Officer for Community Services. We have started to build duplexes on Wright Street. We've got two, two already completed. During the process, we were building a retaining wall and we went for a permit. And we didn't even really realize that there was a alley there because it splits the property. It's never been used. It's up, it's on the tip of the property where the school was. And there was a parking lot over it. This asphalt is probably, oh, 16 inches, 18 inches thick. It's pretty thick. It's never, that alley's really never been used. So we went ahead and petitioned to get that vacated so we can, one, build a retaining wall, which is, we did get the permit approved. And then in the back there, since we own the whole property, Peak Community Services does, that whole half-city block is owned by us. And we were wanting to build on the whole existing piece of property there. So we're going to, looking at putting up two to three more duplexes on the backside. And just really trying to make that piece of property useful. We've had it for nine years or so and it's set vacant. And so we want to go ahead and get some housing for clients and kind of just bring housing to Logan'sport for our clients. What else you'd want to, not take any questions, if anybody has any? Sure. Thanks for that. So I guess the time when we, when we originally submitted for this back last year, the time changed and so it kind of shuffled around and, you know, I understand. I appreciate you working with us, Dave. It's, it's a hard process, I guess, sometimes to get it done, even with some of the attorney's help on what we're trying to do. But we're, we've learned something. Don't want to do it again, but...
Rather old, necessary area of the law.
I actually called John Hillis and asked John for, you know, because John's on vacation and said, can you help me out with this? And he said, sure. And obviously, it depends on who you talk to, we get a different answer. But anyways, I appreciate it, Councilman Morris, for really helping us on this. He's been a great, great help to us. We appreciate him.
There's no utilities in this?
No. No, all the utilities, so we built the two duplexes right on Wright Street. And so the utilities are coming off the street right to those houses. There's nothing behind it at all. And so Shulker Construction is doing the construction for us. When we build the other houses, then they just connect the current utilities to it through the, not a public access, just through our property.
Any other properties affected by...
No, there, the, so that half-city block, we own all that. And then just south of this, there's an alleyway there that, I don't, still on the screen there. It divides the, that property and that one's still in effect. And actually, we will utilize that for trash pickup and the folks that live to the south will still utilize that alley. But just the north and south alley. And if you tried to drive on the property, I think someone brought this up, if you tried to use that as an alley, it's, it's an eight-foot drop from elevation to the ground. So it is really impossible to use it.
Okay. Good. Good, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? 6:36 PM, I will close the public hearing. It will resume with ordinance 2025-10 with Councilman Howard. He had read it. So do we need to reread it? Or does everyone know ordinance 2025-10? Okay. Motion and a second.
This has been sitting around for so long, I would like to suspend the rules on ordinance 2025-10 so that we can get this trans, this vacated and they can move on with the rest of the legal work to get it recorded.
Second. Suspend the rules in a second. Any further discussion? Call for question. Dave Morris? Haley Zenzmaster?
Yes.
B.J. Cox?
Yes.
Susie Wamsley?
Yes.
Scott Peaty?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Cameron Austin?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-10 has rules suspended. Motion and a second to approve ordinance 2025-10 under the suspension of rules. Motion. Second. Any further discussion? Call for question? Dave Morris? Haley Zinsmaster?
Yes.
B.J. Cox?
Yes.
Suzie Wamsley? Scott Peedy?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Cameron Austin?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-10 passes on the suspension of rules. Any public comments? Anyone, anyone who would like to make a comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for us. Seeing none, council member comments?
Commissioner? Can you clarify the financials with the Ironhorses?
Sure.
That question's come up quite a bit.
Sure, I get it, yes. So obviously, now that we've gotten started, the season has officially started, and they won their, their first game, so that's great. $57,300 was appropriated to, to the Logan'sport Ironhorses through the TBL. The team is not owned by the city of Logan'sport. The city of Logan'sport has no financial obligation whatsoever to this team or the TBL long-term after this year. The $57,300 was pulled from the contractual services that is appropriated by the city council every year. It's been through multiple mayors, including myself. The amount has not changed. You guys did not give me more, you know? There was no, no changes, you guys didn't know that. $57,300 was taken from the mayor's contractual services as a primary sponsor for this team for this year, for 2025 season. After this, it's up to the regular public and those in the private sector to be able to support the team. But there you go, there's your... I have a couple of questions along with that, just, I mean, just things that I've been asked that I have no idea. Where are they staying? Like the players? Where do the teams stay, like, do they live in Logan'sport? So, so right now, we are working with Super 8 Motel to have housing for the players. Our coach is being housed at Home 2. And then our assistant head coach, which is Steve Isaacs, he lives in Logan'sport.
Do the players get paid?
They do. So their, their salaries are not part of the $57,300 that we put in, but instead are supported by sponsorship dollars. And so the average salary before a player is about 500 to 1,000, 1,500 a month for three months.
Is it going to be raising sponsorship money or...
The team is, yes. So it's the team's responsibility, not the city's. And it, and that's what I want to make very clear. The city is not on the hook at all for this. You know what I mean? We, we simply just, the mayor's office, the Board of Works, put $57,300 towards starting a pro basketball team. That's it. You know what I mean? It was, it's, it's something that you do all the time, right? We invest in things, and I didn't want to have to come to council, you know, and ask you guys to pay for it when I knew I had it in my own budget. You know what I mean? So I, I wanted to be fiscally responsible in that manner, you know, and not put you guys on the hook either. So doesn't mean that in the future, we might not ask, you know, for sponsorship, but for right now, no. It's just the $57,000.
Oh, is there, when, where they stay at the hotels, is that all through their sponsorship dollars as well?
Exactly, yep, yep. So that helps. So through the Super 8 and the Hotel Home 2 Suites, that is a sponsorship deal, ultimately kind of in exchange, we give them sponsorship in exchange for housing. Yep. Very good. Great, great questions. Appreciate it.
Great traction to the city.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other council member comments? All right. Miscellaneous business and any matters known or reconsidered, including ADA Section 5 of 4 compliance or concerns. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Call for question? Suzie Wamsley?
Yes.
Haley Zinsmaster?
Yes.
Cameron Austin?
Yes.
B.J. Cox?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Scott Peedy?
Yes.
Dave Morris? We adjourn?